Good morning. You would all stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of May 2nd as well as the minutes of May 3rd, special commissioners meeting.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweating.
Yes. Okay, do we have any public comment on any pending resolutions for today? Okay, we will move on to our commendations, and we have two commendations this morning. The first is honoring Isabel Heinbaum-McRuski as Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County Veteran Advocate of the Year. Whereas it has come to the attention of the Board of Medina County Commissioners that Isabel, and I hope I'm not butchering your name, Heinbaum-McRuski, Brunswick, Ohio, has been recognized as Medina County Veteran Advocate of the Year for 2023 by the Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County. Isabel began honoring departed veterans at the age of eight by placing wreaths at veterans' graves at the Western Reserve National Cemetery continuing through 2019 until, inspired by this service, started a campaign to lay wreaths at Westview Cemetery in Brunswick and personally located all 185 veterans buried there, some of which the city was not even aware of. Isabel, since 2019, has obtained 185 wreaths and 50 volunteers each year to honor Brunswick veterans at their grave sites, to include veterans dating back to the Revolutionary War, and each year conducting a memorial service after laying wreaths. Isabel has arranged for wreaths across America Mobile Trailer to come to Brunswick to educate the public about the service and sacrifice of veterans, to include honoring over 25 Vietnam veterans with a welcome home, as well as the VFW post Japlin at Flag Retirement Ceremonies. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Medina County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor Isabel Heinbaum-McRuski for her outstanding dedication to honoring departed veterans in Brunswick and the greater Medina community to instill the spirit of Americanism, compassion, and remembrance of veterans in her community. Would you like to come up? Okay, come on up. We're gonna get a picture with you, and then you can say a few words. So here you go.
Wait, do it that way.
Okay, go ahead. The mic is yours.
Thank you. I wasn't prepared to speak, so I don't really have much to say. Thank you so much. I'm honored to get this.
Okay, not surprising. You are the youngest person, correct, Ed, to receive this award. Yes, congratulations. Okay, next, we have a commendation honoring James Hassel as Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County Veteran of the Year. It has come to the attention of the Board of Medina County Commissioners that James Hassel, Medina, Ohio, has been recognized as Medina County Veteran of the Year for 2023 by the Joint Veterans Coalition of Medina County. Jim, as a Vietnam War veteran, was awarded the Bronze Star and the Vietnamese Cross of Gallantry. And Jim has served as a Medina County Veteran Service Office Commissioner for the past eight years, and a board member of the Medina County Veterans Memorial Hall for five years, where he has saved the hall over $20,000 in costs by acquiring donated labor and materials to improve the Veterans Hall campus, and has served as trustee of the State of Ohio Buckeye Boys State for over eight years, giving eight days of his time each summer at Miami University to work with high school juniors and mentor them on government operations at the city, county, and state level. Jim has served on the American Legion Post 202 and Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 5137 Honor Guard for over 10 years to honor deceased veterans, and is a certified manor for veterans on the Medina County Valor Court, and has served in various capacities at Legion Post 202, raising over $20,000 in the past five years to help children in need. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Medina County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor James Hassel for his outstanding dedication and service to the veteran community of Medina County in the state of Ohio with his efforts to serve the veterans of Medina County in many capacities. Congratulations.
Thank you.
There you go.
One more, in case somebody blinks.
And Isabel, could you come back out?
Yeah, we'll get the two of you.
Yeah.
Do you want all of us, or just?
Yeah, all of us.
Got your foot, friend.
Yep.
Smile, Jim.
I am. That's it.
If you'd like to say a few words.
Well, they complained about my speech at the dinner. It was too long.
I didn't think it was too long. I thought it was good.
Well, thanks very much. I think it's important for every one of us to realize how important the veterans and the veterans' programs and the individuals themselves are to each and every one of us. Medina County is super in their treatment of veterans. I don't know what the number now is, but it's over 10,000 veterans live in this county. We don't see very many of them, but please bring this up to the young kids, because, you know, we need help. We always need help. That's enough. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have county engineer, and we have Dan here today.
Morning.
Morning.
I've got one resolution for your consideration today. It's accepting and awarding the bids for the project known as the 2023 Township Pavement Marketing Project on various roads in Medina County.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweating.
Yes. Thank you, Jeremy. Next up, Jeremy Cinco, sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is amending a professional design service agreement with Jones &amp; Henry Engineers for the Medina Road Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project. That was the forest main addition that we talked about last week. And the second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to enter into an agreement with Shogran Valley Engineering for professional design services to replace the existing water main and sanitary sewer main along Second Street in Lafayette Township.
Do you approve both resolutions?
Second.
Discussion?
Just a quick clarification, the cost of the revision on the sewer project, is that the $90,000 that's being authorized?
That'll be the amended part. Yep.
Thank you.
Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweating.
Yes. Thank you, Jeremy. Next up, we have Brett Thomas, finance director.
Good morning, everybody. I have our usual spate of resolutions for your consideration today, nine in total. The first one is amending appropriations to increase or decrease budgets for various The second resolution is transfers of appropriations for departments to move budgets to different areas as needed. Resolution number three is a revenue adjustment. This is actually going to be the third and final time you will see this one. We've had some issues with getting this where it needed to go for JFS, so I apologize that you keep seeing that one. This should be it. Resolution number four is cash transfers. This one is for adult probation to set up its drug testing services as needed for the back half of 2023. The fifth resolution is to move money from the various departments over to the print shop for all of their individual printing service needs. The sixth resolution is modification of procurement cards. The sanitary engineers have had several procurement cards that the company, Tractor Supply, I believe, has migrated to a new method and deactivated all of their old accounts. So this is essentially for notice for you guys that the above cards are now removed and have been consolidated into one card for the department. The seventh and eighth resolutions are both regarding travel. The seventh is for the county engineer for a conference. The eighth resolution is a summary of the departments under our umbrella. Notably, two of these are out of state, the one for the sheriff down to Houston, Texas, for training one of their people for the National Jail Leadership Command Academy. And the last one is an update of the costs for the travel that was approved last week. We had an amendment to their costs, so that's the sanitary engineers going down to North Carolina. The ninth resolution and final is for our weekly bills in the amount of $1,398,524.05. As usual, all copies of the bills are kept at the auditor's office for anybody's perusal as necessary.
Move to approve the nine resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweating.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Next, we have department updates. First up, we have Eric Hange, Soil and Water.
Before you speak, last time you were here, you talked about the pear trees. Can't believe how many residents came up to me about your pear tree information.
Excellent. Well, all information can be found on our website, and we're gonna start rolling that out in the next few months. Since my last update, our office assisted in 12 technical events, six drainage site visits, two concept plan reviews, one manure pollution investigation, two pond permit applications, and one pond management visit. Our office was involved in five education events, including Earth Day out at Buffalo Creek on April 22nd, Area 2 Enviro-thon on April 26th. Our office sent two staff members to assist with those efforts. April 28th and 29th, our office passed out 13,200 seedlings at Guy's Orchard. Friday's rain was not ideal, but staff managed. On May 4th, our technician presented on soil health for a 4-H Sprouts Group. Kids aged 7 to 10 learned about soil structure and got their hands very muddy in the process. Following tree passout, our office had a few hundred live stakes left. Live stakes are cuttings that are placed to help limit erosion, usually along stream banks, but they also do well in marshy areas. We donated the stakes to Medina County Park District, and some of our staff helped plant them yesterday along the inlet trail north of the H2 Ohio funded Linear Wetland Project. Upcoming events: Today, there's a stream cleanup with 7th Grade out at Highland School District. This Wednesday night, I will be graduating from the Medina County Lead Institute as part of their 2023 class. A fish sale pickup is on the 11th from 8:30 to 11:00. Fender's Fish Hatchery will bring two trucks out this year, and will help them distribute 37,350 fish that were ordered this spring. We are working with the NRCS to reestablish the Medina Local Work Group meeting, which will be held on May 17th at 3:00 p.m. at our office. The local work group is held annually to discuss the needs and concerns of the agricultural community within Medina County. Topics discussed during this meeting will be used to determine program needs and future projects for the NRCS as well as the SWCD. And thank you, Commissioner Harrison, for RSVPing to that. We have our native plant pickup date, May 19th and 20th, 9:00 to 2:00, out at our office. May 31st, our office will be participating in a Portrait to Practice Expo put on by Medina School District. We once again will be able to offer cost share opportunities for producers within the Muskingham Watershed. In Medina, that includes Chippewa Creek and Kilbuck Creek watersheds. Funding practices include cover crop establishment, livestock exclusion fencing, and voluntary nutrient management plans. All of this is made possible by the Muskingham Watershed Conservancy District and our partners at ODA. You can reach out to our office for further information on those programs. Our board meeting will be on the 17th, and it is open to the public at our office, 690 Wedgewood Road. And as always, if you have a group, club, or municipality that needs a speaker, please reach out to us for all conservation needs. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Tiffany Shelton from the Adam Board.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for letting me fill in for Philip Tittering today, who's been a little bit under the weather recently. So first, I want to let everybody know that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we've been doing a lot to get the word out in the community about our services and things that are available, and the good work being done by the Adam Board and our agencies as well. During the period of January through March, we received numerous calls from hospitals, individuals in the community, family members looking for services and recovery supports, and we always do our best to direct them in the best possible way. The need for services is great, and the difficulty that we are finding is the level of request for supportive housing exceeds the 44 units of permanent supportive housing that we have. We have some adult group homes available in the county. However, it doesn't quite meet the demand, and the costs for the monthly housing are astronomical, up to $3,500 a month in some cases. So we also have a North and Place 2 Permanent Supportive Housing units that are set up to house individuals that are homeless. We're also, we have a waiting list for that unit as well. So we're really, we're also looking forward to an emergency shelter to help ease some of those issues. Okay, so moving on, during the last quarter, 5,454 clients were served through the Adam Board services. Eighty-eight percent of those were adults, and 12% were youth. Approximately 1,700 adults and 169 youth are receiving psychiatric services through our system. We have, we served approximately, we served approximately 397 youth that were diagnosed with a serious emotional disturbance, which means that they have intensive mental health needs. To help address the needs of these youth, the Adam Board has constructed the Youth Resiliency and Counseling Center. We're gonna call it the YRCC, and actually, we're having a ribbon cutting for that facility this Friday at 11:00 a.m. And the YRCC is gonna provide trauma-informed care and behavioral health services for youth and families as they work to heal from mental health, substance use, and traumatic experiences. I think we all know, especially the youth these days are really struggling with a lot of mental health issues. The Human Services Levy funding is critical, and has really allowed the Adam Board to fill gaps not covered by other funding sources, such as the 24/7 Crisis and Behavioral Health Helpline that's run through Alternative Paths. During this reporting period, there were 781 calls or engagements through the hotline. Of those, 114 individuals verbalized suicidal ideation. Thirty-four active rescues occurred in which they send law enforcement or somebody out to the home. Sixty-nine individuals were referred from the Crisis Intervention Team. Also, the levy funding assists with a loss team, which is run by Alternative Paths, and that is the Local Outreach to Suicide Survivors Program, in which a counselor through Alternative Paths goes to the scene of a suicide to assist loved ones. The loss team was dispatched three times in the last quarter. So levy funding is also used to fund recovery supports, and so Hope Recovery Community, or HRC, operates out of the Adam Board's Highland House in Medina to provide recovery supports. They also have expanded into Wadsworth and to Brunswick, and they're providing supports and programming to the residents that are at the New Farm Recovery House at the Brown Trump Homestead, or it's Loveland Farms is what we're hoping it's gonna be called. They offer a wide array of recovery supports. They operate a 24/7 Hope Link program where people can call at all hours and be linked with a peer supporter, or get somebody to get help getting involved into treatment. During the period of January through March, 144 new individuals were served through the Hope Link program. The Adam Board has added another 3,000 square feet to the Highland House, and HRC's already begun utilizing that new space. Mr. Titterington and I attended a Recovery Town Hall hosted by Ocar, which is Ohio Citizen Advocates for Addiction Recovery. We were very moved by the comments and how much help the people have really received from Hope Recovery Community and our agencies as well. They really, it was great. HRC provides over 3,000 recovery touches per month. In the last quarter, they provided individual peer support to 52 inmates inside the Medina County Jail, as well as numerous others in group services. They linked 105 individuals to detox residential treatment or recovery housing, and they have a slew of recovery supports and programming. MAT is often initiated and sometimes continued at the Medina County Jail. Eighty-eight individuals received MAT through Ohio Guidestone and Alternative Paths during this reporting period. Twelve women are housed at the Adam Board's Discovery Recovery House, which is operated by Ohio Guidestone. And with Adam Board funds, Kathy's House has increased their bed capacity from 28 to 40 beds. They have Level 1 and Level 2 male beds in Medina County and in Medina City and in Brunswick. And Kathy's House has opened their 12-bed Level 2 recovery house at the Loveland Farm Brown Trump Homestead. And so in closing, the version of the state's biennial budget in the Senate has a 15% cut in the 421 line item, which is where a large portion of Adam Board funding comes from. And so to put this in perspective, if this budget goes through, the Medina County Adam Board could see a reduction of around $337,000 annually, which would really, which would be very impactful. So we've reached out to Senator Romanchuk, and we asked that anybody who has the ability or willingness to do that would also do that, to implore him not to recommend funding reductions in behavioral health. We're really thankful for the Human Services Levy and just for living in such a great supportive community, and thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, next up, we have commissioner's resolution. First one.
Were we gonna do Bethany, or was that gonna be during update, or during?
She's not on my list.
Oh, okay, all right.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
It's okay. Okay, so we have a resolution granting the petition of West 130th Route 303 LLC for the annexation of real property known as Medina County Permanent Parcel Number 017-03C-01-015, consisting of 5.1207 acres from Hinkley Township to the city of Brunswick.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just make it clear, and I just want to thank Mike Lyons for all of his work, not only serving as the hearing officer for this rather contentious public hearing, but also helping us in composing the resolution. This does found that upon the preponderance of the substantial, reliable, and probative evidence on the whole record, that the conditions set forth in Ohio Vice Code are met by the applicant. And I just, as part of the commentary while we do a resolution, we identify by statute and legal precedents what we find important in making that decision, and that becomes part of the permanent record. And that's, of course, should anybody contest this, any parties contest this, this is what the court will look at as for our judgment. But I also want to make sure that we make, and this is, as I said, what we have gone through, we look legal precedents and statutes, the conditions that are met, and evaluate in terms of the evidence provided. But likewise, I think that it's important to put on record what other, we identify as important, the insight to our decisions, and explaining to the public why we made the decision as we did. I just want to point out first, somebody you know, tend to be somewhat academic, goes, you know, government instructor and so forth, historian, but we look at the nature of municipality as a constitutional right of a community to form a municipality. And I look even to the preamble of the city of Brunswick, "We, the people of the city of Brunswick, and the county of Medina, the state of Ohio, grateful to Almighty God for the freedom we enjoy in order to secure for ourselves the benefits of municipal home rule and to exercise all the powers of local self-government conferred by the Constitution. The laws of the state of Ohio do hereby frame and adopt this charter for the government of the city of Brunswick." That was formed in 1960. That charter, of course, was adopted later, but it says very clearly what the purpose of municipality and a corporation is. It's for local home rule, the exercise of all their powers of local self-government. Townships are statutory, the state provides, and they only have the authority granted to them by statute. Municipalities have a specific form. So the premise here is, can someone join that municipality? And as in any constitutional right, there's limits to it. There's safeguards. There's a process. And this was, and we look to 1988 Middletown McGee, which was Supreme Court holding, saying that in enacting the statutes governing annexations, in other words, joining a municipality, that one of the intentions of the legislature was to give an owner of the property freedom of choice as to the government subdivision which they desire that property to be located. There's guidelines, there's safeguards, and indeed, that was the role of commissioners. That's what's mandated by us, is to follow the law. We have our own personal preferences, but we have to follow the law. That is, and we have to abide by that, that legal precedent. And even though we personally may not like the idea of annexation, and I can just say that personally, as a city council member for five years, my late wife Susan, a council member for nine years, city leadership like Skip Trimble, who was the city manager, or the first city manager of the city of Brunswick, and now resident of Hinkley, likewise had concerns about this annexation. My wife and I both supported all our years on council to keep the integrity of that boundary of a West 130th, that Hinkley would not be annexed. But that's a decision not only of the property owner, but of the municipality itself. And the city of Brunswick chose at this time, chose at this time, to go ahead and accept that annexation. But that's up to the city leaders, that is up to those that are elected, and the municipality make that decision whether they want to extend those services and change that boundary forever. It is, I just have to say, is a sad day. It's a sad day to see that boundary changed, for those of us that believe that one of the great, one of the reasons for maintaining that boundary, the commissioners put water and sewer over there, likewise, they supported decades ago, as well as those of us in Brunswick City supported the creation of a community reinvestment area, tax abatement, and that there would be planning and there would be development along that corridor that benefited that community without having to annex into the municipality. And there was that careful balance. And unfortunately, two trustees last June decided that they were going to renig on the commitments of that community reinvestment area, and they decided that one single property owner who was qualified for that tax abatement was going to be denied. And it was only because of that 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 property owner, rightfully so, chose an alternative, chose an easy alternative across the street to annex. It's for local home rule, the exercise of all their powers of local self-government. Townships are statutory, the state provides, and they only have the authority granted to them by statute. Municipalities have a specific form. So the premise here is, can someone join that municipality? And as in any constitutional right, there's limits to it. There's safeguards, there's a process. And this was, and we look to 1988 Middletown McGee, which was Supreme Court holding, saying that in enacting the statutes governing annexations, in other words, joining a municipality, that one of the intentions of the legislature was to give an owner of the property freedom of choice as to the government subdivision which they desire that property to be located. There's guidelines, there's safeguards, and indeed, that was the role of commissioners. What's mandated by us is to follow the law. We have our own personal preferences, but we have to follow the law. That is, and we have to abide by that, that legal precedent. And even though we personally may not like the idea of annexation, and I can just say that personally, as a city council member for five years, my late wife Susan, a council member for nine years, city leadership like Skip Trimble, who was the city manager, or the first city manager of the city of Brunswick, and now resident of Hinckley, likewise had concerns about this annexation. My wife and I both supported all our years on council to keep the integrity of that boundary of a West 130th, that Hinckley would not be annexed. But that's a decision not only of the property owner, but of the municipality itself. And the city of Brunswick chose at this time, chose at this time, to go ahead and accept that annexation. But that's up to the city leaders, that is up to those that are elected, and the municipality make that decision whether they want to extend those services and change that boundary forever. It is, I just have to say, is a sad day. It's a sad day to see that boundary changed, for those of us that believe that one of the reasons for maintaining that boundary, the commissioners put water and sewer over there, likewise, they supported decades ago, as well as those of us in Brunswick City supported the creation of a community reinvestment area, tax abatement. And that there would be planning, and there would be development along that corridor that benefited that community without having to annex into the municipality. And there was that careful balance. And unfortunately, two trustees last June decided that they were going to reneg on the commitments of that community reinvestment area. And they decided that one single property owner who was qualified for that tax abatement was going to be denied. And it was only because of that 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 property owner, rightfully so, chose an alternative, chose an easy alternative across the street to annex to that municipality, as was their right. And indeed, I think with the preponderance of evidence showed that it is actually an increased benefit. Sadly, what this means too is that now our other property owners along that corridor may likewise be looking to Brunswick, because now they have found it is a whole lot, that basically it's actually going to save them money if they develop that property to annex into the city of Brunswick. And that's unfortunate. But it was two township trustees, and at the time, Bethany Detler contacted me, I was the Economic Development Corporation liaison for the Board of Commissioners, the president of the board, contacted those trustees. I did talk to them about the potential impact. And unfortunately, they could have changed their mind a month later in July, they could have changed their mind in August, they could have changed their mind in September, they could have changed their mind in October, or November, or December, or January, but by then, you know, they waited till the week before we had a hearing to change their mind, that the property owner was entitled, or could be offered a tax abatement. And that was far too long, far too long to decide that you had not made a good decision. They knew well, well by then, that the annexation was already proceeding, as was the right of that property owner. They had already secured and have gone through the expense of an attorney, have gone through the expense of going ahead and proceeding with the cost of annexation, and you can't blame the property owner for actually pursuing that. And it's unfortunate that you had leadership within that township trustees that decided very poorly not to review it, and have different opinions. And one of them, when I'm talking with them, says, you know, even if we don't grant that abatement, that's a good location for a discount drug mart. In fact, they're going to build it anyway. And that trustee was right. The thing is that they annexed, they were going to annex. Indeed, they're right, yeah, they're going to build it anyway, because it is a very good location for a discount drug mart. So, and I'll just say, my history of annexations, and I understand the issue of a regular boundary. Regular boundaries, I grew up in that. I grew up in Brunswick Hills Township for the first 21 years of my life. And then, of course, I moved over in Brunswick City when I married my wife. And that, in 1960, when the village was formed, and Brunswick Hills Township was formed, they went from a four, basically four boundaries and 25 square miles within that year, to a 25, to a eight-square-mile village with 88 boundaries. Islands over nearly 5,000 acres had been, by referendum, were detached from the village. Once they became a municipality, law said, no, they had to approve it. But what it came down to is 88 boundaries. So over those decades, over those decades, the city of Brunswick has struggled with trying to have some logical boundaries. All these islands, we've dealt with it for decades and continue to deal with it. And so I understand that issue. But I also know that there's no such thing as a perfect square that was presented to us. And actually, if you look further to the west of the Western Reserve, you have Camden Township, Rochester Township, over there, Lorraine. Those aren't perfect squares, those are, they're basically 17 square miles. They're not square, because they couldn't do a five-by-five, a five-mile-by-five mile. So there's, but they have reliable boundaries. And that's, I understand that importance, I understand the need, the desire, but it's not an issue that the Board of Commissioners can take into consideration. The factors that we, and the statute are very clearly articulated, legal precedent already says what we can consider and what we can't, what we can consider in making that determination. And when it comes down to it, it is their right, that property owner, to become part of that municipal corporation. And it's not something that we relish personally. I prefer that the two communities that have had in their comprehensive plan for at least the last decade, I think, references to a joint economic development district. So indeed, if those community officials are very sincere about it, they ought to be examining, they ought to be looking at a jet with Brunswick. We know for years, and I know two of the former trustees were friends of mine, who said there was nothing in for Wadsworth, or excuse me, nothing in for Hinckley to get into a jet. All of a sudden, yeah, there is something in for Hinckley. Unfortunately, question comes down to, what's in it for Brunswick? So it's going to take, I think, a little bit of a statesmanship, a little bit of people coming together, realize for the whole, for the benefit of the whole, maybe they ought to be sitting down and talking about mutual benefit and working on a jet. Both communities had it in their community plans, they just ignored it, their political leadership needs to pay attention to it. Certainly, we commissioners, I think, would be able, and Bethany Detler, I'm sure, would be willing to sit down and work with them. We know the attorney they hired is actually considered to be the father of jets, Al Schrader, Elburn Summitt County, helped write the legislation, he was a township trustee, Springsville Township. He went around for about a decade doing, I would say, dog and pony show, but he would basically go into about every conference you could go in. On the annexation reform in 2001, he'd be there talking about jets. He'd be talking about how municipalities and townships can work together to promote mutually beneficial economic development. So unfortunately, it's one of those areas that I think community leaderships ought to come together, we ought to be supportive of. But this is one that, as I said, this is historic, this is noteworthy, somewhat of a sad day, but we have to follow the law, not our personal preferences. But I think we needed to put on record too, what we know about the facts that really don't fit into the statute, or required by, but that the, I think that our electorate, I think our voters need to know. The true story is, that property would never, would never have approached Brunswick if they had been granted, have been treated with respect, that every other property owner within that CRE had, and been granted that, basically granted that tax abatement. And Bethany Detler did a great job representing the township, representing the county, and working on that tax abatement deal. And I know that there were comments made during testimony suggesting that the trustees didn't know anything about this, not involved, and that's shameful, because I know she is meticulous in involving the local communities. I've sat on some of those, each of us, well, maybe not Erin yet, but Bill certainly, I think Bill sat in on that one, all of us, when it comes to those negotiations. And there's a representative from the Boards of Education involved in those negotiations, and sitting down and talking about it, and then presenting it to the elected officials for approval. And it's shameful to suggest that there was a process that was outside, outside an appropriate process. And indeed, they do a good job over at Economic Development Corporation, negotiating it, working with all the parties, and presenting it. It is just unfortunate that you had two elected officials that were so short-sighted and neglected the rights of the property owner to actually be able to have that benefit. And of course, we commissioners, at this point, are forced to act upon this and follow the law, not our personal preferences.
I will just, I guess, add, I think the analysis that we provided inside the resolution does a very good job, and I do want to commend Mike Lyons for his work on that. It, I think, explains the basis of the decision, many of the points that Commissioner Hamblay made, I think, find their way into the decision as well. I just had some additional thoughts that maybe didn't get incorporated, some might overlap with what Commissioner Hamblay had to say, but inasmuch as they're my personal opinions, and as Steve points out correctly, things that maybe have to go by the wayside when we actually make the decision, I just wanted to share some additional thoughts that I had in going through the process. First and foremost, I think there's a general reluctance on our part to carve up existing boundaries, and I think that was clear in our discussions. But as Steve rightly points out, we're bound by a statute that affords us very little discretion in these annexation requests. It's a property owner of a single parcel of property, and in, once they make a showing of benefit to them, we have to show, we have to find clear detriments to the immediately surrounding area that outweigh those benefits to the property owner. And in the absence of such local detriments to the surrounding property owners, that balancing test more or less demands ruling in favor of the petition. I think that's ultimately what carried the day, and like I said, I think that summarized well in the analysis that's in the resolution. Many of the detriments that were presented by the township were detriments to the township as a whole, and do relate back to preserving those boundaries, which in a perfect world, I think, I think we would be able to weigh those things a little bit more heavily in the history and the nature of those boundaries. But they weren't, they didn't really present a detriment to that immediately adjacent, immediately surrounding area that would reign in the township. And so therefore, even though I'm personally sympathetic to the concerns and the impact this has on the township, it really ended up ultimately being beyond the scope of what we were able to consider when we rendered our decision. There was some testimony that argued against the financial analysis or perception, maybe there wasn't enough financial analysis performed by the petitioner. I think it's ultimately beyond the scope of our analysis, and would actually be inappropriate for the three of us to substitute our judgment for the petitioner's business judgment on the benefits that were associated with the annexation. At some level, I think we're, you know, we need to take that at face value if they say this is a big benefit to our business. We, you know, unless we find them not to be credible in saying that, we have to put a certain amount of weight behind that. And then another thing that did not factor into the decision, but I thought was noteworthy, were the assertions by Attorney Fisher on behalf of the city of Brunswick, he's Brunswick's counsel in the proceeding, that this annexation is isolated and not part of any larger plan of expansion. You know, the lack of other pending applications certainly lends credence to that argument, in spite of arguments, I think, from some of the folks from Hinckley, that this is just going to be the first domino to fall. So while obviously our board would be required to consider any subsequent applications on their own merits, if there were subsequent applications that started to roll in on the heels of this decision, it would, I think, potentially call into question the veracity of those statements that this application is isolated and not part of a larger trend or strategy to further extend Brunswick's boundaries into Hinckley. I think that, I think that argument would carry more weight in subsequent discussions, in subsequent petitions, I should say, which I'd prefer not to see. And I guess I'll end by saying, you know, there were notes made of the possibility of joint economic development district or other tools that could eliminate the need for future contested annexation proceedings. Ideally, my hope would be that the elected officials in each community will find sufficient common ground to examine those solutions in the interest of avoiding future proceedings like this one, because I don't think this is a helpful exercise for adjacent communities that do need to work together, need to rely on one another to go through too often. So, but in spite of that, and in spite of my concerns about the bigger picture on this, I think the statute, the language of the statute is clear, and, you know, that's why I'll be, I'll be voting in favor of the, of the resolution granting the petition.
We look at six specific areas in the ORC to make this decision. Mike Lyons has provided us with a finding of fact attached to this resolution. He has done a wonderful job summarizing all six areas that lend credence to the vote we're about to take. Roll.
Hamblay?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweating.
Yes. Next up, we have public comment. Anybody from the public like to say anything? Okay, we are going to move on to discussion session. Bethany, did you have something?
I have introduced two new employees with the Dan Hill Economic Development Corporation. We have Jake Altman, who is our Economic Development Project Manager, and Brandon Gibson, who is our Economic Development Manager. I believe they're familiar faces to you all, just started yesterday, and we are thrilled to have them all working on projects, and we'll be visiting companies, and working on task forces, so we're thrilled to have them.
Welcome.
I referred to them as the dynamic duo. I'm just trying to figure out which one's Batman.
Anything else, Bethany? Chris, do you have anything?
Wanted to mention, there's been some confusion about the county's electric aggregation program, especially in light of projected and predicted rate increases for electric supply. The county has an electric aggregation program. It appears with Energy Harbor as our current supplier, it's a fixed rate, 6.05 cents per kilowatt hour. It appears that First Energy, who generates the boundaries and mapping for the county's aggregation program, the cities also have their own aggregation programs that are not included in ours. But there have been, I believe, 456 addresses that are improperly mapped by First Energy. So I've been getting quite a few calls from residents, and just want to mention that we're working on, with First Energy on a fix. They've agreed, I think, to take a look and correct the boundary maps that generate the enrollment lists for Energy Harbor. Energy Harbor can be reached at 866-636-3749, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. Residents are encouraged to contact them if they have questions about enrollment or the program, or concerns that maybe they've been placed in the wrong program. So I just want to make mention of that before, again, projected rates, supply from First Energy take effect this summer. Secondly, and lastly, I met with Mayor Hanwell yesterday morning to discuss the most recent draft of the courthouse lease. It was a productive meeting, I believe. Major points of discussion were the renewal periods, possible inclusion of a preamble or introduction describing the benefits and the efficiencies of a joint project, security costs, plowing, and utilities. I'll be meeting with Assistant Prosecutor Lyons this afternoon to take another crack at the language, and try to get something in front of you, as board members, by tomorrow sometime. And then I do also have, I believe, final drawings for the exhibits, which would be attached to the agreement. So we'll keep you posted on that process. That's all I had.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks very much.
Brett, did you have anything? Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, actually, I want to bring up for discussion, or at least mention, emergency management has presented, had two programs where they presented the final drawings for the, I guess, well, the facility, is it a garage? Does that include meeting rooms, as was intended?
I think the new plan that I saw when I was at the Township Association meeting is a remodel of the old facility and a new garage.
And also the garage. Got it. So it's kind of a detached garage.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, and I know the executive committee never saw, did they ever see the?
I asked the EMA director, and she said that, I believe, maybe next meeting, or whenever she had the finalized plans. But no, the EMA board has not had, seen the presentation that the Township Association saw, no.
Or as well, the chamber had a presentation last week, I guess it was, or whatever, on that. We haven't seen them either, right? And we own the building, so.
I saw it at the Township Association.
Right, but I know they've never presented us. So when you come back, I guess we should ask them to come and show us the drawings, at least some clarity as to what they're doing. I know that the issue of the state grant being used, unfortunately, was a press release that failed to give credit to the state legislators, Larry Obov, Sharon Ray, Mark Romanchuk, Daryl Kik, for keeping that grant. So I think that's, it's unfortunate that wasn't added in the press release, because it had gone through several cycles. As we've discussed, and I've had those public comments before, we need to recognize that carryover, without being built, was, at a time, as the process works, could easily have been spent on something else. And I know Senator Obov had to defend it more than once when he was president in the Senate. There was a late-night lame duck capital bill added to another, and the House wanted to remove everything that wasn't already planned in construction. And Obov publicly, actually defended that, as president of the Senate, made sure, and we ought to give credit where credit is due to our legislators.
Our legislators have been.
Enabling us to have that, and unfortunately, you had a press release that didn't acknowledge their contribution.
Our legislators have been very good to us.
Yes, they have. So I just want to make sure publicly to acknowledge their, their ability for us to be able to have money for that, but also as the property owners of that, we, I would prefer that the commissioners would have at least seen this before it was widely disseminated, so we knew what the project actually looked like.
Yeah. I'm looking forward to seeing the final, the final detailed plans from the architecture.
All right. Very good. Thanks.
Erin, do you have anything?
I have nothing today.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, go, we, I would make a motion, we go into executive session to consider the employment and compensation of a public employee.
Second.
Roll.
Pause for effect.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweating.
Yes. Okay, we're going to go into executive session. We will not be back on camera. Everybody have a nice week. Thank you.
Everybody, thanks.